Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Partner Education webinar series. This is presentation two of three, and today's presentation is called, "Deep Dive: How the Expanded Planning Board Works for Planners and Dispatchers." So my name is Gary Rodriguez. I'm handling marketing and business development here at ExpandIt. And also presenting today is Michael Ferbata, who is on the software development and pre-sales side of business. The agenda for today's presentation is as follows. I'm going to do a quick description of ExpandIt. Next, I will show you an overview of the business benefits that are created by using ExpandIt. I'm going to then hand it over to Michael to do a demo of the product, as well as the Q&amp;A portion, and then I will take it over for the next steps. So a little bit about ExpandIt. ExpandIt has over 20 years of experience as a Microsoft ISV. You have a standard integration to all versions of Microsoft Dynamics. We have over 4,000 existing customers and 50,000 daily mobile users. And ExpandIt has a team of expert consultants in North America who are focused on sales, support, and service delivery. And we work with organizations who perform service and installations to help them maximize productivity and reduce their administration costs. So in today's presentation, we're going to see some of the business benefits that ExpandIt creates. We're going to see how we can improve communications between planners and field staff by using the Expanded Planning Board. We will also see how the Planning Board improves customer experience for the end customer. We're going to learn about how a company can reduce wasted time by optimizing their daily schedules for field workers, as well as improving first-time fix rates on jobs. And finally, we will see how a company can improve cash flow from faster invoicing and reduced billing errors. I'm going to now hand it over to Michael to take over the presentation.
Thank you, Gary. I'm just sharing my screen, and we will start it on the side. Okay. So everybody should be seeing the Planning Board at this point, and they should be able to... Not the planning board, I apologize, our administrator login. So in the last webinar we had, we focused on the mobile client. And our system by default has two types of users. We have the administrators and the planners, and we have the mobile side and the mobile client. So we focused on the mobile client, what you can do out in the field. And now we're going to focus primarily on the planning aspect and not on the administration side. And we'll focus on the administration side in another series event. So as a planner, I log in through a different interface. And so as same as the administrator than the mobile users. And so if you were here in the last one, you'll see I log in and I'm able to see some basic pieces of what I'll need to do. And as discussed, we're going to focus on some of these other parts in the future, such as overall setup and setting. We're going to focus on approvals in a different module, and today we're focused on planning. First off, when I log in, I would see some key performance indicators. And they're customized based off of different customer needs. But the premise here is to give them a snapshot of information specific to today. And that's normally today or maybe the week. But the premise of these KPIs is not to become a reporting tool that overtakes, say, if you're using Power BI. Our goal would be to give the data, all data we have back to the ERP system, and hope that you utilize a reporting tool to centralize that data. But this is to give planners and administrators some indicators of maybe daily requirements. And again, it's the detailed planning. So the user will click on Planning Board and pull it up, and I've already opened it in the second tab. And they're going to come into their planning. All of the information you see, just like the mobile client, is going to be derived from that ERP system. So we're going to be planning against people or resources that we want to plan against. And how they're categorized into, say, a department or a region is all driven from the ERP system. You could plan the people, you could plan equipment. You could plan both Daniel Meyer here at the top, and you could plan, say, a scissor lift if Daniel Meyer also needed to take a scissor lift on a job. So I don't have any equipment as part of this demonstration, but we'll show you how you can plan more or one or more people. And it's the same for planning a piece of equipment as well. So the premise of this is detailed planning. So you may, from the ERP system, have a generic concept of, I do, say, regular maintenance. And you have a service order, it's the first Monday of every month. And that service order or that installation or some warranty work might occur. However, the... Who's going to do it? Are they on or off this week? Are they available? Do they have the right skill set? Is the training in place? There are a lot of things that come into play for detailed planning. And that's what we're going to be taking a look at here today. And that's the premise of the Planning Board, is that detailed planning. A lot of the pieces that we're going to look at are also have a lot of configuration options behind them. So let's jump into some of the detailed planning itself, and we'll talk about configuration options as we go through, and different ways to plan for different types of requirements. So if you were in the first one, we talked about the concept of a work order. And we are planning work orders. But even beyond the fact that we're planning work orders, we're actually planning, planning entries against a work order. So you can have the same work order worked on four times across four days. Those are four distinct planning entries, but one work order. Those work orders, again, can go against both jobs or projects, service orders. In theory, you could utilize sales orders if that's the route you want to go. It's some type of document from an ERP system. So the premise of it is, I have a, I have a work order, and I want to plan that and create these planning entries. The word, for us, the word job and service order are synonymous. So if your ERP system utilizes the word job, it is not meaning the job from the ERP system to us. It is a job or a work order. Okay? So what we see here is, we see some resources on the left-hand side. We see them separated by, in this case, regions is how I built this demo. But it could be by skill sets. It could be any way the person decides they want to do this. But we see regions pretty common. You can see today's date and tomorrow, and we have it configured to hide the weekend. If we don't work planning on the weekends. It doesn't mean that you couldn't get a order, plan it to the weekend as an emergency order. It just means that in general, we don't do it. So we've hidden them as part of this demonstration. However, you could show them, and you could make them regular workdays. That's a decision that your individual customers would make. The date ranges that you will show are selected here in the to and from. And they can utilize that to, say, view more detailed or less detailed information. Currently, we're showing a workday from 6:00 AM to 19:00. However, that could be extended for a full day. We can set not just what we display, but what we work. And currently, this is actually set to stop work at 16:00, even though we're displaying until 19:00. So we'll take a look at how that would function also. As we come across the top, there are some buttons for the planner here to utilize. So today is exactly what it sounds like. It will rebase the Planning Board to today. So if you were, say, looking for some historical information, you changed your dates to the past, or if you were looking often to the future, but then you needed to come back to today, you could do that. The next is update. The Planning Board will update itself, and it will update itself depending on how it's set. But in regular usage by default, every 60 seconds. And on the left-hand side, you're going to see it, say, right here, updating. Right now, we we, we can update it ourselves. So if we were to, say, change a date range, so instead of going to the 20th, we want to go to the 19th, we can say update and force the Planning Board to perform that update. Okay? The next is schedule new job. So again, we're scheduling a work order. And if we want to schedule that work order, new is very specific. It is something that has not been previously scheduled. So I can open this, and I can see new work orders here that have been created. And I can search them, and I can go down and view them. And so as you can see here, I can just grab them, come down, and search them as I see fit. So this is the capability of being able to schedule a work order. So how do I schedule if I have, say, a new work order? How do I actually schedule this? Well, there's a couple of different ways to do that. The first would be to grab a work order. You can look at some further details of it just by clicking on it. You can take this work order and simply drag and drop it to any given user. So I can say that I expect Magdalena to perform this work order. And you'll notice I pushed it to 16:00. Well, we talked earlier about my working hours. My working hours are set to stop here, 17:00. So what the system has identified is, well, I said this order would take two hours. So that means I'll have to leave, and I'll have to go back tomorrow morning, 07:00, which is when I configured it to begin my working day, to finish this order. I might see that as a planner and say, that's a terrible idea. I'll just send them tomorrow, 07:00. You can say, okay. It's going to ask if I want to move all the entries together, which I do, because it will rejoin the entries. So this is the premise of some detailed planning. And again, the planner is visually making decisions. This is one way of plan, to the drag-and-drop method. Another way of planning would be to get a little more information on any given job. So here, I have a job. I can click here, and it will open it up and available for planning. You'll notice that, I apologize, I clicked the wrong one. It'll open it up for planning from the, from the schedule new job. And from there, I can plan it, so I can add a planning entry. So that planning entry can be added, and I can add it for, say, Eric Casey, who's one of my technicians. And I could appoint it to, say, for him tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM. But I could get more details about what actually is to be done. So I may come over to the Details tab and see what is being worked on. I could see if I maybe had a manager assigned as the responsible party for this order, or a department if there was one. If it is a service order, a service order, maybe there's a type of service order, customer PO number, person who ordered it. So there's potential for a lot of different types of information. If it was against what we call a project, so if you're coming from AX, it is a project. Or if you're coming from NAV, it would be a job. You, this work order might be assigned as part of a project or a job, one of those project tasks or activities. So I could see some details on that. I could see where the company is. I could see who the company is. I could see who's paying, in other words, who's being invoiced, who the customer is, and then where am I actually going to work? And that's what you're seeing here. I can see what I'm supposed to be out doing. And you can have one or more entries here. And this is what the task of what I'm doing is. And this task can be related back to, for AX, it would be an object. For NAV, it would be a service item, or it can be related to a product or an item, or it can be related to just a general description of work. So this is giving them a general description of what we're going to be out doing. There may have been some pre-assigned lines, planned lines of, say, products or items that you need to go out and take with you to perform this work. And so as a planner, when I click in to plan from, for more detail, I can view all of this before I decide who's going to be performing this work. So those are your two general basic concepts of planning from the Schedule New Job. In general, I would not necessarily say to even use the Schedule New Job though. I plan, I suggest that people utilize the search functionality for this type of detailed planning. The reason for that is because the search functionality has the ability to search of search type. And you'll notice the search type here is planning required. Well, I could search new, which would give me the same listing as Schedule New Job. I, orders or work orders that have not been planned before, that are new and need to be worked. I could do that. But I also, in theory, have to plan backlog items, orders that have, are new or unfinished, that are old, that have been left by the wayside and need replanned. The best way to find all of these together is anything that requires planning required in the future. This is the best way to come in and find these planning required. So you'll notice we have a lot of orders that show up. And on these orders, we're not in the new listing, because they've been assigned to people in the past. However, they've been assigned in the past and not worked on. So what we need to do is, we need to actually go out and perform work against them for them to come up to date and to be taken off of this list. So there's a requirement for them to be, have work completed against them from the past. So this is where I would suggest that we utilize any type of planning from. And again, you can plan directly from here in two methods. Either the drag-and-drop method, as seen before, or by clicking here to plan a specific order out and pulling up the pop-up window that does the edit order screen that we showed, that we saw. We're going to come back to the editor order screen in more detail, but as part of planning, it's important to bring up and to discuss it. So that's the premise of two of the more straightforward ways to plan, either through the Schedule New Job or through the search functionality, and visually seeing it in almost, you know, in the, in a, in a grid or a chart method of seeing who is working what days on what jobs. Depending on your customer type, they may be in an area where they want to view data more visually. And so we have this functionality to also integrate the planning with a map and show map, which I already have open, so we're going to just make it smaller. And we're going to see this show map to automatically come into view of where you are. And it didn't, because I selected an order that was further out from here. So what it's going to do is going to zoom into the area of your information. And so all of my users and my jobs are within this area. And so what you can see on the left-hand side is you can see users here, and then you see users here. Well, where are these? So as an example, where is Mr. Melendez? Well, I can click on him, and it will show me on the map where he is. And vice versa. If I need to know where is Ms. Mendoza on the Planning Board, I can click that, and it will show me where they are. Now, right now, I only have 12 people up here to plan for. If you have 100 people to plan for, and you're scrolling vertically on the Planning Board, it's much more useful, because it centers the screen on those people, and it helps you find that work. And the same goes true for jobs. And so here, you can say, this is that job. Whereas on the Planning Board, it's interactive back and forth. And so if I didn't know where that job was, and I wanted to know where it was, I could click it, and it would show it to me. Now, by clicking this job, and it's already being planned, you'll notice it shows me a route planning. It's showing me that Mr. Melendez will travel from this home of record, because it's his first job, and the system is configured to go from his home of record to, to there. So the planning map is a way for you to be able to visually see an order. And here, you can actually see, just visually, and as a planner, if I'm looking at this, I would actually think that Magdalena Mesa was a better fit for this order. So I may drag it down to her. But I also can click on the order, and I can see that Magdalena Mesa is a better fit. And I can click here to assign it to that user and move it directly from the map. I also could have clicked on Magdalena and seen that that work order is a better fit. I could have clicked it, and it would have assigned the order to her then. So the premise is, the map is a good tool for certain customers who work in different types of regions, whether it's rural or urban, to, to utilize and be able to visually see different people. We find this to be extremely useful in different scenarios. We see some customers who do utilize that within their planning and operations center up on large-screen TVs to give a view of who's working and what they're working on. And they can utilize the Planning Board on the screen TV to do that, or where they are and where the jobs are. And, you know, and you can see at the same time who is working and not working through the map also, where you put that on the TV screen. So as a management tool, I can open this myself and look at it and get a good feel for it, or I can walk into that central location to see what is happening with that. So another benefit to this is, we see a lot of times where you might have separate planners for the different regions that I've set up. So you might have separate planners for LA or North LA or South LA. However, South LA has to cover for North LA, and he may not know the area as well. So the map visually helps him represent where things are, where people are, and where jobs are, and get a feel for the travel that would be required between them. So most of the time, planners very much understand their regions, how they operate. However, they do not always, so if they're new or filling in, it is important for them to be able to have that visual aid to help them to plan also. So while we've been looking at this, and this, we've also been looking at some filtered data. Currently, we're filtered down to only these four areas for the purpose of this demo. However, we could filter further. And so as an example, we have this filter button, which we did skip over to discuss planning. So filtering gives you the capability to filter on different types of data. So by default, we allow you to filter on what we call departments, which are these top-level groups. We also allow you to filter on users specifically, different types of job statuses. So job against the work order. What work order status is it? We haven't touched on statuses yet, but they are color-coded across the top of the screen here. We're going to talk about them in a minute. And they are identified on the actual work order on the Planning Board itself. And you could do it by different types and by different types of data pulled from your ERP system. So in this case, a service order type as an example. We also have the capability of filtering based off of skill sets. So if you have skill sets assigned to resources and assigned to work orders, then you can say, you can easily find people who have the required skills for specific skill sets. Okay? So those are all capabilities within the system. I can easily say that I do not want to include LA as part of my filter. Update that, and I'm now only looking at three areas. So users are able to create their own, what we call views of the Planning Board, and they're able to save those and set defaults, and they can share those views. And that's all managed through this view dropdown. And through this view dropdown, as you can see, I actually have a view for just West LA. And I have a view for all of LA. So users can pre-create these filters. We see a lot of times users pre-creating these filters for different types of skill sets. If you are planning to, say, subcontractors, you might separate them under different skill sets and different, different departments, or within your own resources also. Okay? So as part of what we've seen is, we can customize this so that planners have a better ability to get in and actually view this information for that detailed level of planning. What we've touched on so far is the ability to look at jobs, look at the basic information of a work order, schedule the work order, look for new work orders or overdue work orders, and how that relates to the map. I'd also like to touch on what we call the suggest functionality. And the suggest functionality, as we touched on before, really relates to users who may not know the area because they're new, or because they're filling in for somebody, or maybe because there's just so many different requirements of skill sets or SLA agreements, if those are configured throughout the system. And so suggest is pretty much what it sounds like. It is the capability of suggesting a job or a work order to a user. So if I say select, it asks me to select a work order, so I'm going to go ahead and select this one. And it's going to find who should do this work order. And you can see right here, it's identifying that Magdalena Mesa would have been the best person to actually perform this work order. And they can get to it within nine minutes. How about we schedule it for tomorrow at 9:00, at 7:00 AM? And it's giving you a little more information about this also. It's giving you how long it thinks the travel time will be. Currently, Mr. Melendez is scheduled to here, and it's going to take him 14 minutes. So it's also going to look within any SLA agreements that have been configured for the, for the work order, for the customer assigned to that work order, or the item you're going to work on. It's also going to look at skills, if skills have been enabled. So it's going to find the right person for the right job to meet within SLA agreements within the shortest amount of time for you. So why is this important? You're trying to optimize people's daily schedules. So this tool is very useful to get that base level of information while you're planning. However, intimate knowledge of the region that you are planning to is very important. So what I mean by that is, is your planners will learn more and more about where they're planning, about the customer base. The planners will learn more about if a specific tech is better at fixing specific issues. Just because another tech has the skills doesn't mean they're the right one. And so, again, this is a, this is a visual tool to help the planner make the best decision possible. This tool will look between service orders to find if it can fit a work order. I apologize, look between work orders that have been scheduled to see if it can fit a work order in for a specific user. It will find the best possible time. And there's settings on here that you can configure and see, such as, where should I pull the resource from? Should it only be my department or all departments? Or should it be within a certain distance? Maybe outside working hours is the only way to meet an SLA? We've seen that. So these are all possibilities. And so that's the premise of suggest. Suggest is the premise to get you to the best possible data. Now, we're going to focus on one more way of planning. So we've talked about using search to find items that have been planned but not worked on. And so search will show that to you as part of that planning required. However, there is also the capability, and I'll discuss where I would see this best use, but of just saying, hey, if there's old work, move it to today, and then I will plan around the old work that may have not been finished. So as an example... So as an example, Mr. Melendez may not have finished work that was scheduled to him yesterday. And so I could even go back to yesterday and look at that work. So I can change my planning board dates and you'll notice that I have multiple orders planned across yesterday for people that were never worked on. So then the question becomes, well, yes, I could do this. I could change my date range. And every day I could come and see what wasn't finished as a planner and move it to today or forward beyond that. It depends on the company's requirements and their planning timeframe. I also could just come within here and say I will delete this planning entry. Deleting it doesn't delete the or the work order, it just deletes the planning entry. And I'll set it for planning off in the future. Another way of doing it, it is to utilize what we call move overdue. Move overdue will move this entry from an any entry from the day previous to today. At which point in time, it's up to the man, the planner to see conflicts and resolve those conflicts. Again, it's a visual process for that detailed planning. So move overdue can happen on multiple levels. I can move overdue for everybody on the planning board. And this can be pretty onerous if if you have hundreds of technicians and they constantly are losing work. So you can do it by departments. And so you'll notice here I can move overdue, which would move the three technicians within this department and move their time forward. And then I can also do it just on a user by user basis. Depending on workflow and and number of orders unfinished, it may make sense to do it as a planner on a user by user basis as you're going down the planning board to move forward. But if you don't have a lot of these, it may make sense to do everybody or by department. And then just look for overlaps and conflicts and deal with it there. For a purpose of this, I'm going to move forward with just moving this demonstration uh person, this uh Mr. Melendez for. And so the premise is anything from the prior day will get moved forward to the today. And you'll notice I even have orders from days prior to that, which got bumped forward into today. So it's not just looking at yesterday, it's looking at prior history as a whole into today. That's what it's done. And you'll notice it creates a conflict. Because in theory, I still need to get to this customer. I still need to perform this work, but I need to get it done within that timeframe. So what do I do? Well, maybe I know that this prior entry is not actually needed and I will plan it to another day. Well, I could move it to another day or I could just delete it. And the same goes true for this one. I know that this isn't going to be done here. However, maybe I just want to move this to tomorrow at a different time or the same time. And I can do it by dragging. So we're going to look at one more way to move an entry here in a second. But this is the premise of being able to find those prior pieces. So planning really has multiple ways to get to the best information possible. Again, we can plan new orders. We can search for anything required planning, which would have found those prior orders that required planning. We can look at a map visually and see what is within our filtered purview. And so those prior orders didn't show up because we weren't filtering for the date ranges to include them. But if you've changed your date ranges, the map will change accordingly within that data model also. We've talked about how suggest can help you find the right person for the right job. And we've also discussed how you can get data moved forward utilizing the move overdue. We've looked at the planning board now just as an example and we can move these work orders at any point in time from one person to another. And this is useful and and visually planning, it helps people create a day. But you also might want to not move them. You might want to be able to look at some additional data for the job. And we've already seen the beginnings of this when we were planning the jobs or the work orders. And so we have this edit order screen which gives us that information. We touched on what can be shown by default. You know, some basic details about it. You can see this one is actually for a specific project. And you can see where the work is supposed to be done. You can see what is supposed to be done on site, the task, and you might see some planned lines. So why are planned lines important? Well, they're important for the planner if the workflow at the company is to identify planned lines and make sure that they get shipped on site. Or if it is to identify planned lines to make sure they make it into a truck or if they need orders. So planner can see these pieces and determine what will be needed in theory to complete the transaction. So the theory part is because if say we're going to do oil changes. An oil change may have certain parts as part of the planning. It may have a gasket. It may have an oil filter. It may have oil. However, just because you think you're going to use five quarts of oil, you might use four. The mobile, the mobile client will determine what is actually consumed. Whereas the planning lines is to help understand what needs to be there and on site. We can go a step further and we can look at the planning entries. And this is really what I want to discuss was I can see when it's planned for. So we talked about this being planned and it's signed, but I want to move it now. So let's say I want to move this. I can edit this existing planning entry or I can add additional planning entries for the same work order. So I might know that Mr. Melendez needs to go to the order today and that Ms. Mendoza needs to go to the order tomorrow. So I can assign and create these two different planning entries to these two different periods. And that would give them independent planning entries across those two different areas. But I also can do what we call add coworker. So if I know that Mr. uh Mr. Melendez needs to work with Ms. Mendoza on a on a work order, I can also do what's called add coworker. This also creates additional plan entries for different people. And so I could say and it will create an additional plan entry and it will link them together. Yes, they are across different departments, but we see this a lot where there's bleed over between different areas probably based off of the skill set normally. So why would it be linked together? Well, they may be meeting up at the order at the same time and cannot work without one another. They may be riding in the same truck and and that's important. So why is that important? Because if you're planning a team, say of two to, you know, X number of people, say four, I see that a lot. You'd want them together because if they're driving together, if you're moving it for the team lead, you are normally moving the work order for everybody else because they are going to be driving together. So that's where the linkages come in. So we've looked at how I can not just edit the planning by dragging, but by opening edit order, get some more information about the order. Look at some maybe some planned lines or some details about the order. Also how I could link an order across multiple people. And linking this order to say another person is the same way you would link it to say a piece of equipment. So if I had say a scissor lift that I needed to utilize as part of this, I also could add coworker or resource of scissor lift. And then I would have a linked entry so that when the team lead, Mr. Melendez goes out, the scissor lift is also scheduled to go out with him. So it gives you the ability to not just schedule people, but also equipment. Let's go ahead and edit. So at this point as a planner, I may also be able to view some comments against the service order. And you'll notice that a comment has already been entered from the office originally to tell us to make sure you knock. So maybe the doorbell doesn't work, make sure you knock, get in. Okay, so you as a planner can add additional comments. The portal comments, and we're going to have another series on this, is how this would integrate with the customer facing portal. So portal comments enable you, the planner, to write a comment here. That comment goes from yourself. It also is visible and readable by the customer through their customer facing portal and is available to the technician. The technician can respond. The customer can see that on the customer facing portal also. And then the customer can write messages in the portal and that would show through to here and the mobile client for the mobile filled mobile user. So portal comments allow for three layers of of movement of those comments from customer to mobile through the planner. You'll also see that you could write a comment that would go back to the invoice. And as the mobile client fills out this information, you will see their details populate back in here. We also can add attachments. So why would we add attachments? Well, we would add them possibly for the mobile user, say a wiring diagram or a map to the location if it's remote. Customers might include a photo of the broken item when they create an order through the portal. And that attachment would flow to here. You would be able to see it. It may help you determine how to plan. So as a planner, you can do that. The last part I want to touch on on history is history. History gives you, the planner, the ability to see who has worked against a customer, a location or an item and see what has been done in the past. So here you can see that Mike Ferbotta went out and worked on this customer on the twelfth, two days ago at nine forty-three in the morning. And then you would probably be wondering, well, what did he do? And you could view the comments for that order, if there were any. And you can see there were some right here. And then you could view the reports filled out if there were any, and you can see there were two. You could view the materials utilized if there were any. And you can actually see there were three materials used. So why is this important? Is it as a planner, you may make the determination that, well, Mike Ferbotta did not repair it correctly, which is why we have to send somebody else out. Maybe I plan to him and his manager so that they go out at the same time to resolve the issue. Maybe I plan it to a more experienced technician. Again, we're trying to give you the best information, make those detailed planning improvements. The last two parts to cover are the concepts of messaging. So we have the premise of messaging. We can message to mobile users. We can message to customers. We can message to groups of mobile users. So why would we message? We would message to send information, say on a planned visit to a customer. We could do that by right-clicking out work order and saying message. From here, you could send this to say a customer either by their cell phone, their email address, and if those pieces of information are available from the ERP system, then they would display here. You can add a calendar visit so that they get an actual calendar invite as part of this. And it gives them some information of who will be showing up, when they'll be showing up. You also could include a message or send a message directly to the mobile user. And these can be sent as emails, text messages or internal messages is what you're seeing here. And that means that it goes to the mobile client through our mobile app. And so those messages are then available to the mobile app as they're using them. You might create a message to send to Mr. Melendez identifying to him that he has been scheduled tomorrow at one PM when you send this to the customer so that they both know that this has been scheduled. So again, messages can be sent to one or more people at a time. You can message whole groups of people. You can message people. We also have the ability to identify what is called an absence, but you can think more of it as an unavailability. So you're going to mark an area as unavailable. It doesn't have to be an absence. It could be internal training, making them unable to go out in the field. It could be safety training. It could be uh you're pulling them in to run inventory. It could be that they're sick and absent. It could be that they are going to schedule a vacation. And what this does is it enables you as the planner to identify visually that somebody may or may not be available. And you can see here now visually I can see LRO is not available on this day. Tomorrow, they've already called them sick. Then it may have been vacation or a pre-planned sick day. Now, what it doesn't do is it's not going to stop you from planning to this day, nor do we want it to. And why is that? Because we want to be able to plan in order to this day. That person may have called out sick. They might also be the only person with this skill set. Oh, I apologize. I configured it to not allow it to schedule to a sick day. But you can configure it to allow it to schedule to a sick day. I thought I had it. And why would we do that? Because they might be the only person with that skill set. And so you might schedule to them, call them, get them to come in even though they're sick. Or you might have them leave internal training to go out and do work against an order. And so you can have different types of training and determine based off of the type if you're going to uh or I'm sorry of absence. And based off that type, if you are going to allow them to schedule to those types. But configured it to not allow this case typically. However, I've configured it to allow the schedule to informational because an internal training maybe doesn't trump delivering a service request out in the field if that's the way it is. So as a visual planner, you've now planned out the date. And what's going to happen throughout the day is across the top, you're going to see these statuses. And you'll notice that we have appointed and accepted and travel started. As mobile users are working on these, these statuses and these orders will move on the board. So as a work order is being worked on here, if he, if it is started by a mobile client, then it will turn green and moved to the date and time that it is actually started. Same goes for travel started. So you can visually see if a technician is traveling to a work order, started on a work order. You can see work orders historically that have been marked either incomplete or complete. So you would know if a work order is marked incomplete, a future planning entry is required. And it would show up again under the search function as planning required in the listing. And you would know that you actually have to still perform work against that because it was not completed. So again, it's, you can visually see throughout the day where your technicians are through the map. And you can see what they're doing through color coding. And the color coding functions for both the map and for the planning board. So as people work throughout their day, they'll change colors. So on a high level, this is where, this is the the concept of this detailed planning of taking orders from your or some type of document from your ERP system and planning it out through a work order through one or more scheduled planning entries. So we've touched on some of these pieces, which is the messaging, which helps improve communication between planners and field staff, also to customers. And that's what helps improve that customer experience. We can send you information through messages. We also can get you the right technician at the right time with the right skills within an SLA applicable. That's helping that customer know that you'll get there and be able to actually fix it. And that's how we're improving our first time fix rates by making sure people with the right skills. And then we can view the planning lines if they were pre-planned, making sure they have the right parts to complete the labor the first time they show up. We've helped optimize the daily schedules, both through visible uh visibility on the planning board, utilizing maps, the suggest functionality and really the planner's knowledge of an area and his technicians. And all of this in the end goes as it did before to the mobile unit. The mobile unit completes it and sends it all the way back to the RP system, getting you the information back to the RP system in minutes rather than days on paper, requiring those pieces to be re-entered, giving you that increased cash flow if you're invoicing daily instead of weekly. And also taking away your billing errors because nobody's losing pieces of paper or writing it down after the fact. So planners are able to come in here and plan additional work orders to people as they finish things faster and get information and increase that. So that's going to conclude the demonstration of the planning board. I'm going to flip it back to I'm going to flip it back to Gary, and we're going to finish up and just summarize the planning board. And I believe I actually just did, but I think we touched on all of those pieces, and then we'll take any questions that exist. So as, as we just discussed, and, and I, I think I did touch on all of the summary pieces, we, we improve those communications through messaging, um, and, and that also improves the customer experience through messaging, uh, improving first-time fix rates, getting customers to service within the SLA agreements, that improves customer experience. We're optimizing days, daily schedules, both through the suggest functionality and the, and visual map planning. And all of this helps increase from here to the mobile unit and back to increase cash flow, because you can invoice faster, you have less errors in those invoices. And, and that's also part of your customer experience, because you generate a more trusting experience between the service technician all the way back to your customer with billing.
Thank you, Michael, for the presentation, and thanks for that summary as well. Uh, so, we don't have any questions? Actually, we do have one question here. So, uh, if a client needs to plan out installations based on sales orders, can they do this? Or do they need to use, uh, service? Michael, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. So again, by default, really what the system is, is you're planning out work orders, not service orders. So, uh, I don't know if the backend system in question would be AXNAV or something else, because there's upgrades to other products as well, but as an example, if you are integrating, you're planning out a work order, and that work order is going to do work against something, and it could be, say, if we're talking about NAV, it could be a job from NAV, it could be a service order from NAV, or it could be, oh, and I see the answer was it's Business Central, so it's, it's the same concept as NAV. So it could be a job, it could be a service order, could it be sales orders? Yes, it could be sales orders. Um, there's, you know, some, um, additional setup requirements to integrate, but we have some base integration to sales orders that allow us to plan it out, take information on it, and send it back in. Could it integrate out of the box? I believe so, yeah. Uh, meaning, I would have to just make sure that the integration, it, it really depends on how you're trying to utilize sales orders. Can we take a sales order, send it back in and create a sales order from our mobile out of the box? Yes. But if you're trying to utilize sales orders to do something, um, I've seen people utilize sales orders to actually perform service, and in doing so, they had items which were the service items on the sales orders, they were doing some different pieces. So it really depends on if you're trying to utilize Business Central, maybe not in the way it was meant to be. Um, yeah, so if you're utilizing sales orders to plan and schedule installations, I see this from Barbara Allen, then the premise would be, is this, is that actually coming from a job and the job task? Um, you know, is the sales, is it the sale of a job task to install something? And so, I, in that specific case, I, we'd have to talk about what they're trying to accomplish through Business Central, um, and so that's a good follow-on to discuss that. But certainly it's possible, it would depend on the data model for the sales order. The premise of our, of our application is that it can pretty much integrate to any document header and lines, um, with just some data manipulation, pulling it out of the backend ERP system. So, uh, in terms of that, I'll, I'll allow Gary or Luke to follow up with you and see if they're doing anything specific for that question.
Okay. Great.
No other questions, Gary?
Uh, no. So we'll, we'll wrap things up, uh, for today. Um, I'll put up the contact information in a minute for any other, uh, questions that come up. But I just wanted to thank everyone for attending the presentation today. Uh, and as a reminder, we have another webinar coming up next week, which is the final part in the series, uh, part three of three, and it's titled, "Deep Dive: How the Expanded Service Portal Works for End Customers." Uh, so again, if you have any more questions, please reach out. Uh, here's my contact information, uh, and feel free also to contact Luke if you have any sales-specific questions. Um, I also wanted to note that this recording will be made available online after a day. Um, so thanks again, everyone, for attending, and we look forward to seeing you again next week. Goodbye.